With liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'll open the joint special call, City Council and High Speed Railroad Commission, on Monday, October 13th. Ms. Bach, do you want to call? Roll, please.
Mr. Fletcher? Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here. A few comments up front. I think we're all aware that this is one of the three or four, possibly the top two issues in Vero Beach with the Lagoon, but certainly in the top three or four railroad. It's something we all care about. I want to draw your conclusion to a county resolution of October 7th, 2014. And I will only read the final whereas, but there are a number of whereases in it. And it reads, whereas it has now become necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to say in clear and unequivocal terms that it opposes all board Florida's effort to force this high-speed passenger rail project through Indian River County while having the cost of the project borne by the taxpayers. And the other one that I call your attention to is one adopted by City Council of the city on May 6th of 2014. And it has a number of clauses in it. The first one, and I'm not going to read all of these, but I'll read the headlines of them certainly. The first, Section 2 is requested all board Florida pay all project costs. And there's a paragraph of verbiage about that. Section 3 requests to limit public financial assistance to all board Florida. Section 4 requests for extended review comment period for the draft EIS. And Section 5 requests for public hearing on draft EIS in Indian River County, Florida. What was adopted at that time was rather early in the process, and it differs from the county commission in that it lays down some caveats, but it doesn't say as strongly that we're opposed if it turns out after the session that we are. I think the point of this meeting is we have an issue here, and the point of it is what do we do? And for the City Council, the four of us present, to come to a conclusion. And I think we all need to realize by ourselves that this small city really has very little influence in this matter. So I think that's important to understand. At the Treasure Coast is it the League or Council of Governments who has decided that the various governments there, including school boards and four counties and so on, unanimously voted that they, as representatives, would bring back to their city council a recommendation that we oppose the railroad. So in one sense, I'm doing that today, and in one sense, Mr. Diggs also was actually caller of the meeting. The other thing I think we have to realize is that this entire procedure is, to some degree, covered by federal law. On November 5th, I bring your, I call your attention that Indian River State College, there'll be the EIS hearing, and I think you all need to attend that. Also, unless further action is taken, I believe, Mr. Diggs, your High Speed Rail Commission sunsets, is it on December 5th or 6th, one of those days?
Yes.
But I do think we should speak with one voice, whatever that voice is. Now, these caveats, this could be rather a long meeting. We will run on the City Council rules, which are somewhat more stringent than the commission rules. That means you address the chair, and I will readdress. We are all here, whether members of the commission or the council, to listen either to fact or opinion. Opinion is just as welcome as fact. We are going to only deal with the railroad. If there's anything beyond that, you know, I won't allow it. I would ask that any one person come up one time and one time only. I won't allow debate. For you, for all of you to understand, the people that are on the agenda, Representative Mayfield, who will be the second person on the agenda, Casey, you will actually be the first, just because of her scheduling with state commitments. But the people that are on the agenda, Jim O'Connor, Phil Matson, and so on, will have, within reason, the time they need. But the rest of us, including the members of the commission and council, I ask as much as possible of you to stay to three minutes. This could go on for hours. I quoted a Jefferson quote last time, that a few words you should be able to say. And I think at this point, then, we'll open the meeting, if there isn't further comment by council or the commission. We'll open the meeting with Casey Trailer, who's from Florida Not All Aboard. She has a presentation which is opposed to the railroad, and it'll speak for itself.
I have the PowerPoint.
She needs a mic.
We're springing this on her. She thought she was second, but...
(laughing).
Is this the same PowerPoint that we saw at the High Speed Rail Commission?
Yes, this would be. And that's an excellent question, Mr. Hetty. And, you know, the idea here is that, to some degree, one of our responsibilities in government, all of ours, is to make information, pro and con, available to as many people as possible. So you have seen this before, in all fairness.
Hi, I'm Casey Trailer. I'm with Florida Not All Aboard. I founded the Grassroots Group and is proposing the All Aboard Florida Project that's coming through our community. I just wanted to open up that we're going to have a couple rallies that are coming up on the grassroots side. It's going to be Saturday, October 25th. Twenty-fifth. At, there we go. Turn it around, thanks. At the inlet in Fort Pierce. And we're going to have representatives from Brevard, Indian River County, St. Lucie County, Martin County speak, as well as a representative from Congressman Posey's office and Congressman Patrick Murphy as well. So I hope everybody can join us. So, All Aboard Florida, Grassroots Group, were comprised of residents and business owners. We started in February, and at that point, we started a petition, a Facebook page, and a website. Since that time, we have over 31,000 people that have signed a petition against All Aboard Florida growing through the communities. It's wonderful, growing every day. We also have over 30 resolutions, and from each of the counties, from Brevard down to Miami Dade, about the impacts of the All Aboard Florida Project. The most recent is the Treasure Coast League of Cities that passed a resolution just last week. All Aboard Florida claims to be the first profitable passenger railroad system in almost a century. It's privately, they claim to be privately owned, and they are, by Fortress Investment Group, which is a hedge fund manager out of New York City. Fortress Investment Group is your typical hedge fund. It wants to purchase companies, pump them up, and then dump them at a profit. In 2007, they purchased Rail America in Florida East Coast. With Rail America, they did just what they're supposed to do. In 2012, they sold it for over twice their initial investment. That's what they're supposed to do. Interestingly enough, that's the same year that All Aboard Florida, the passenger rail system, was hatched. And All Aboard Florida, for those of you that are not aware, and I think all of you are, 32 high-speed trains from Miami to Orlando, seven days a week, early in the morning to late in the evening. And this is in addition to the freight trains that we currently see. For those of you, I'm sure you're well aware that the draft environmental impact statement was just released, and we learned in there that they project that they're going to have 20 freight trains in 2016, so a 42 percent increase. They're going to travel at speeds up to 110 miles per hour along our FEC corridor. This picture I have here is from a turn in Stewart, just north of the bridge. That train was going at 25 miles per hour and derailed back in 2004, 30 cars. One thing All Aboard Florida does is claim to be 100 percent privately funded. They've applied for a $1.6 billion taxpayer-backed RIF loan. It's not taxpayer-funded, or it is not privately funded. That is a taxpayer-backed loan, and I want to reiterate that. We also are responsible for lease agreements in the counties. Martin County pays an annual lease agreement of $40,000. They also have to do rehabilitation on these maintenance or on these crossings. They do typically two to four in Martin County rehabilitations a year. The average cost is $60,000 per intersection. Our engineer in Martin County has estimated that these costs will double once this track is double-tracked. They do plan to double-track from Miami to Orlando, with the exception of our bridge in Stewart. That'll be a huge choke point, as it remains single-tracked. We have to ask, is All Aboard Florida losing or competing to see who will lose the most taxpayer money? And we ask this because they're adding another passenger train system in South Florida. Amtrak already operates there, between Miami and Orlando. In 2013, it lost $46.6 million. Tri-Rail, $87 million with its loss in 2013. There's a competition, it's called Megabus. It already goes from Fort Lauderdale to Orlando, and it also runs out of Miami to Orlando. The fare starts at $1, and it maximizes around $17. So there is competition besides the rail system for people to use that's going to be far cheaper. I already talked about the RIF loan. All Aboard Florida, they claim that they have other private financing available. We all heard in this past week, they've, are seeking, seeking's the key word, private activity bonds. We found in their executive summary for their application for the RIF loan, due to the project's status as a new development and the required construction period, the ramp-up traditional debt financing in the capital markets is not feasible. All Aboard Florida, in their own executive summary, said, "Traditional debt financing in the capital markets is not feasible." You also probably learned about All Aboard Florida that sells $405 million. I don't know if I can turn this off. They sold $405 million worth of bonds a few weeks back. They sold them at rates of 12 and 12 and 3/4 percent, junk bonds. Not only were they junk bond, 12 to 12 and 3/4 percent, they needed to put collateral on these bonds to sell them. There was a lien on the land, the rights to the passenger track, the ability to run the business if the project goes wrong. It offered a purchase at par if the project is abandoned before an opening deadline. That was the collateral with those bonds. The buyers, we didn't spend a lot of time looking at it just because we saw it as an equity play. "It's a bit of an equity story," said another. "It's because of the collateral. That's why it was an equity play." Then we learned All Aboard Florida wanted to pay off their high-risk bonds with the federal RIF loan that was reported in the Palm Beach Post on July 26th. Cato Institute, Mr. Randall Tool, stated he is skeptical All Aboard Florida will be profitable, either as a transportation or real estate investment, and that reducing the private sector buy-in by paying off the bonds is one more reason to oppose the project. Even with this week's news that they are seeking, and again, they don't have, they are seeking these private activity bonds, we at All Aboard, at Florida Not All Aboard, want everybody to know, this is not a done deal. They're seeking these bonds, and in the Tampa Bay editorial last year, they have an entire article, it's posted on my website, floridanotallaboard.com. I'm going to give you one quote out of there. "This kind of corporate welfare cheats the federal treasury and enables government to give an unfair advantage to one business over another. As lawmakers in Washington consider how to dig the country out of its deficit, limiting this tax of its subsidy is fertile soil." So even though these are private activity bonds, it'll end up being purchased by private companies, if they will purchase them, it's a tax-free subsidy to these buyers. Taxpayers are still losing money here. We also have to ask, why did All Aboard Florida sue to block to release the ridership studies? Again, they applied for a taxpayer-backed loan. They want to use our money to front this project. We should know the ridership studies. I'll go over this rather quickly, but there's declining real estate values. There's a study that found a loss of property at value of about 20 percent of properties within 400 feet of commuter freight rail right away. Will lose 20 percent of its value. This study is on my website as well, and it was also quoted by Mr. Bill Hall. He's president of the Hope Sound to Questa Realtor Association. Our Martin County property appraiser also has a couple studies online that show values next to railroads will lose value, again, up to 20 percent. And just to let you know, our Florida Not All Aboard researchers have found there's 1,500 properties in St. Lucie County, 4,000 in Indian River County, over 170,000 in Palm Beach County, and Martin County has 1,400 properties. So there's a lot of real estate values that are affected. You know, I tell people that you don't have to live next to the tracks, and you don't have to be a boater affected with the bridges being down to be impacted by this project. The reason being, when our real estate taxes go down, or our marine businesses lose business, there's less income coming into our community. Our leaders are going to have to figure out ways to make up for that loss of income, either by making cuts or raising our taxes. Safety, in the interest of time, I'm going to zip through these, but Martin Health Systems has weighed in, and the sheriff of Martin County has weighed in, and recently Jupiter Medical Center has weighed in about the impacts of the trains. 32 high-speed trains, along with more freight. Seconds count, folks. Eight seconds can make a difference. We also talk about Acela. We believe that All Aboard Florida could be 92 times less safe than Acela. Why? Because of the grade crossings. Florida East Coast and All Aboard Florida has 95 percent grade crossings. Acela is 98 percent bridged crossings. Secretary Zaba, the Federal Railroad Administration, he said the safest at grade crossing is no grade crossing. Again, FEC is 95 percent grade crossings. Our researchers found FEC's 15-year safety record between Cocoa and Miami is 50 crossing accidents plus 171 trespasser fatalities, for a total of 221 deaths in 15 years. That's approximately 15 deaths a year. You add 32 high-speed trains traveling at 110 miles per hour with the existing 14 freight trains, and it's going to increase that opportunity for accidents, injuries, and fatalities by more than 300 percent. Quiet zones. This is up to each community to decide if they want a quiet zone or not. The only thing we want to point out is that in January, there's a study, the Federal Railroad Administration said there's a 62 percent increase in accidents at crossings where train horns were banned. So it's something that people need to be aware of. No train horns, it is quieter, but it also could be an issue for people that aren't going to hear the train. Fun Train. Has anybody here heard of the Fun Train? And those of you that heard my presentation before has heard of it. This was a train that ran in 1998 in Florida, very similar in All Aboard Florida in that they offered a dinner, they had a tiki bar, virtual reality arcade game. It was supposed to be a fun train from Fort Lauderdale up to Orlando. They hoped to lure the 13 million vacationers from Orlando to South Florida every year. But in just 11 months, this project went bankrupt. Why? They couldn't get ridership. At Florida Not All Aboard, we also like to say AAF is really all about freight. There are a lot of statistics about the freight. 80 percent of Florida East Coast business is handling containers at the port where it has exclusive rail contracts. Port Everglades is a 43-acre facility and increases FEC's available intermodal capacity from 400,000 to 450,000 lifts per year. More freight's coming. Mr. Hurstwick stated, "Unloading just one of the new superships through the Panama Canal would increase FEC's volume by 18 percent." More freight is coming. Again, Mr. Hurstwick told Progressive Railroad Magazine that, once major projects are completed at Port Miami and Port Everglades, the work on the Panama Canal is done. He hopes FEC's share for freight will grow from 10 percent to as much as 30 percent. More freight is coming. They've also stated that they're going to increase some of their train lengths up to 14,000 feet. The DEIS stated the average was around 8,600. They didn't state the longest and the shortest. The longest, 14,000 feet. That's 2.65 mile-long freight trains coming through our communities. Also, the Panama Canal will accommodate the post-Panamax vessels that carry 12,600 containers. Today, they carry 4,500 containers. More freight is coming. FEC is the exclusive rail provider at Port of Miami and Port Everglades. Port of Miami is the largest container port in Florida, deepening and widening in rail link to FEC rail yard, has been added. In Port Everglades, I just thought it was very interesting to know that we don't know always what's on these freight trains. Port Everglades is the main seaport for receiving petroleum products, including gasoline, jet fuel, and alternative fuels. So what are we doing here at Florida Not All Aboard? We're following several avenues. First, we're working with U.S. Coast Guard. Once the EIS came out, they said they would weigh in. We are hoping that they will. If you go to our website, please, there's a U.S. Coast Guard survey. They are asking for people's input. What's really neat about this is they had public meetings set up, and they had such a turnout of comments coming in, that they had to cancel these meetings, and they're going to reschedule them at a later date where they can accommodate more people and more comments. So we feel the U.S. Coast Guard is going to be somebody we need to work with very closely because of the three bridges. There's one in Stewart, one in Jupiter, the Loxahatchee, and one in Fort Lauderdale over the New River. This really impacts the marine business. The marine business in South Florida is a $7 billion industry. It's very important to us. This is our bridge here in Stewart. That's the bridge, I want to point out again, is going to remain single-tracked. All Aboard Florida has said that they're going to time their trains on the other southern bridges, so they're going north and south at the same time and eliminate, or help limit the time the bridges are down. Last night, for example, or actually Saturday night in Stewart, there was a train parked at our confusion corners for 14 minutes. Another train didn't come through until the next night. So we're kind of wondering how they're going to be able to schedule these, that they're always going to be able to keep those bridges at a limited downtime, when obviously with 349 grade crossings, and I don't know what happened on Saturday night, but trains are not always going to be on schedule. We also found the DEIS that was released. We are going through it. One thing that we found in Martin County is we asked our county to put a camera on the bridge to count boats. All Aboard Florida said that they used peak season numbers in January and took two to three weeks' worth of data. I spoke with some of our local marinas. They said, "January, peak season? Well, that's the roughest seas. It's very stormy. It's January, it's cold. It's not peak season at all. Matter of fact, it can be one of our slower months." And lo and behold, the numbers have come out. In the first 53 days that our camera was up in Stewart, they counted 12,874 boats, 243 a day. All Aboard Florida estimated 157. It's going to be very important for all of us to please go through that DEIS and make comments and find out what you've, you consider the impacts that have not been addressed. On our website, we have the dates for the public comment meetings. Please look at your community. Indian River County is going to be November 5th at the Indian River State College, right here in Vero Beach. We ask you, please, come out, make your public comments. And more importantly, they are going to need written comments, which you can send in any time. At these meetings, they said that they're going to have cards for people to comment in, which you can take home and mail in, or you can send them in at the meeting. But the written comments is what they'll keep for public record, but please, attend these meetings. It is our time to shine. We've had over 31,000 people sign that petition. We need 31,000 people to please comment on this EIS. Early on, we asked, "Go west, big choo-choo, go west." The purple line is the CSX line. It is not owned by FEC, and simply put, they said, "We don't own that. They own the FEC tracks, so that's not a consideration." However, it does go from Miami to Orlando, and it misses much of the Treasure and Space Coast. Again, I just want you to know, All Aboard Florida is not a done deal. If there's one thing you walk away with today, please know that it is not a done deal. They are still seeking funds for this project. I see we have Mr. Rusty Roberts here in the audience, and I'm going to bring him up again as I did last time. When I spoke with him initially back in the spring, he said, "Once this project is up and running, everybody will find out it's not as bad as they thought, and we'll get used to it." Ms. Ali Sewell, their corporate affairs manager, said, "We need to learn to coexist." And Mr. Roberts, "We own the land and the tracks, and we can do what they want." And they are a private company. They do own the land and the tracks. However, there's a lot of impacts to our communities, and that's when they're using our money to front this project. That's where I think that we residents have an input. What can you do? Please contact all of your elected officials. Please comment on the EIS. You do have the power. Congressman Murphy and Congressman Posey have asked the Government Accountability Office to review the feasibility of this project in regards to the RIF loan. Senator Negron said that he will oppose any funding from the state of Florida for this And also, Congressman Murphy and Congressman Frankel have went to Secretary Fox, and they went to him with all of our concerns very early on, back in April. I want to stress, it's the power of the people. These are some of my volunteers. We can do this, and together, we have brought a lot of resolutions, a lot of petition signing, and a lot of light to this project. It is the power of the people. This is our community. We want to protect our quality of life. This is just pictures of some of the volunteers and some of the work that people are doing, just contributing. The one in the front lives in an HOA and can't put a sign in the yard, so he found a way to let his community know about All Aboard Florida. And finally, just to sign, just to end this presentation, please visit my website, floridanotallaboard.com, and please sign the petition. And finally, make sure, make sure, make sure you please comment on the draft environmental impact statement. Thank you.
Casey, are you going to invite Mr. Roberts up? You don't have to come, Mr. Roberts, if you don't want. Mr. Roberts is actually quite a nice gentleman.
Yes, we see each other quite a few meetings.
He's quite a likable gentleman.
Mr. Mayor, before she leaves, can we ask her some questions?
You may indeed.
You're clearly very knowledgeable on this. Could you, could you tell our residents here in Vero Beach what you view as the number one objection to All Aboard Florida?
That's a, that's a question that I, there are many objections. I hate to put them in a number one, number two, or number three. Each person has their own objection. It could be safety, it could be traffic congestion, it could be the fact that they're using taxpayer money. There are so many objections to this project, I've got to let each person decide what that number one is for themselves.
But you must have an opinion. Could you, could you tell us what you think the number one objection? If we're going to, if we're going to send objections to All Aboard Florida, what do you view as the number one objection for our community that we should look at, that we should concentrate on?
Again, I live in Palm City. I don't live in Vero Beach. I don't think it's fair for me to give Vero Beach their number one objection.
This, by the way, this is the completed EIS, and it deals with everything from red cockatiels, woodpeckers, to tortoises, to, you know, the bridges and whatever. This comment about it, if you read it, and I want to say this fairly, if you read it, there is an answer that says each of the issues in here, and there must be at least 100 of them. And that's just an estimate. I could be wrong about that. But each one of them, there is a reasonable explanation or a reasonable conclusion, and so on. The point I'm trying to make to you is that, for myself, dividing the town in half of the traffic problems would be my answer to your question. That's just personal to me. It's not official to the city.
Your number one, Mr. Mayor, would be what?
It would be the traffic objections, and dividing the city in half would be mine. In other words, how do we get aimless? That happens to be mine. That doesn't mean I'm right.
No, that's fine.
Doesn't mean I'm right. But, and that sort of thing is dealt with in here. And it talks about the elapsed speed, and how long gates are going to be down, 90 seconds, and so on. The point that I'd like to make is that Vero Beach by itself probably isn't in a position to be heard very well. And beyond that, really, an objection to this has to be basis, Casey did a good job of talking about the bridges, but it has to be on specific points. In other words, when you have an EIS study, it isn't a question that, "I don't happen to like the traffic problem," and Brian's implication is correct. I would have to prove in response that it really is a traffic problem, or there really is, since I brought the subject up, a hospital problem. What I'm trying to get over to the public is, generalities don't serve as objections. They have to be researched, and they have to be specific. And they would have, they would have to involve more than just Vero Beach. In other words, we ourselves don't have the horsepower. So I just wanted to make that point. Ms. Turner?
Mr. Mayor, but I would say, our concerns within Vero Beach are important, and I certainly think that we have the right to make those voices known. You pick up this EIS, and there are a lot of things that are not addressed in this document. There is nothing on our historic buildings. There is nothing on the archaeological site that we have right next to the railroad tracks. There's very little addressing just the sheer numbers of that grade crossings and the peril that that's unprecedented anywhere in the world to have a high-speed train with this many at-grade crossings. So I certainly encourage you, I think we put our voice... So I certainly encourage you, I think, we put our voice in with those of others, and we'll be heard. But I certainly think, yeah, Vero needs to take a stand on it.
Yeah, and I would agree, we need to take a stand, and I hope that's the point we come to. But taking Mrs. Turner's example of the Vero Man site, the archaeological site, the responsibility of making that objection rests with us.
Absolutely.
That's the point I'm trying to make. In other words, if you don't raise the objection, it is not an objection, the way this process works. Is that enough?
That is absolutely correct. This is the time to make your objection.
May I weigh in?
Yes.
As a resident of Vero, I have three concerns. The first being safety. I am opposed to trains coming through here at 110 miles per hour. That is, to me, a grave situation. If it were up in the air 20 feet, no problem. It's ground level. To me, that's a problem. Secondly, there are no stops at this time in Vero Beach, and I believe we do not derive one single benefit at this time. Now, I've heard some promises in the future. Promises don't count. Put it in writing, put your money on the table, and move on. But right now, it's all pie in the sky. Those are my three objections, sitting here at this side of the table. Thank you.
Mr. Day, do you, do you want to move forward with, while we, do you want to move forward with Jim O'Connor and Monty and so on, or would you like to make comment?
I'd like Mr. Mayor to move forward, and hopefully Mrs. Mayfield.
I'm sure she will. Mr. O'Connor, do you have comment?
Sure. I think there's some more public comment if we're going to allow that. Mr. Mayor, do you want to proceed on the agenda?
No, I was going to, I think we should, including Mr. Manson, I think we should make our comments first, and then let the public comment, this a this, them. In other words, I think it's fairly obvious that Mrs. Turner and I at least are not interested in railroad train. But I think your position should be known, and your, the objections you see, so that the public can comment about those, too, and question as Mr. Hetty just did.
Mr. Mayor, as pointed out by many people, speeding at 110 miles an hour through our downtown area, which we have a city park, we have the Heritage Center, we have the Community Center, we have parking that's going to be within 20 feet of this railroad, does pose a lot of safety concerns as far as we're concerned. But that being said, first, when you talk about the EIS, I do want residents to know that there is a, two pages in there that sort of give you a synopsis of each one of those. You don't have to read 522 pages. You can pretty well go to this table of contents. It takes and identifies each of the topic areas, and then the conclusions that have been drawn, and those that would affect you the most, I think you can get through it. Because a lot of times, somebody will look at 522 pages, and it's an undaunting task, except for people like Brian and the mayor, I guess, to read those. But it is a real challenge. But that table of contents really does give you sort of insight into what's taking place. Another thing, and I did bring this up at the council meeting, this creation of a sealed corridors, and this was taken off the Federal Railroad Administration, that does not mean we're going to have fences running through the city of Vero Beach. What this does, it talks about improvements at intersections and intersections only. And early on, people started thinking that there was going to be some type of ceiling of the area where the railroad is going to be running. That is not based on the information on the Florida Railroad Administration's website, is not what that means or entails. And Monty Falls is going to talk to you just right after me, but there was a meeting today in which we talked to the consultant and how we're going to try to address the comments, and Monty can give you much more insight into that. As a group, where the cities will give, the consultant is working for the county, but it is, he's covering all the crossings of the county, covering the entire county. And we do not want, just because the city makes comments, discourage citizens from also making comments, either verbally or in written form. But, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you, we have Monty.
Monty, come forward, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Monty Falls, Director of Public Works, and Jim's Correct. Today, I met over in Indian River County with their Public Works Director, Chris Moore, Sebastian's Public Works Director, Frank Wantanabi, and the consultant from CDM Smith, Jill Gremaldi. And Jill gave us an update on where they were in their review process of the draft EIS. And they're going to have their draft comments prepared around the 24th of this month, and then they hope to have their final by the 18th of November. And they have promised us, when they get that draft completed, they will send a copy of the draft as, to the city of Vero Beach and City Sebastian, as well as the county. And like Jim said, they are reviewing all the crossings in the county, inclusive of the ones in the city limits, and it's a great resource for us to have for them to do that for us. They've got experts on staff that have, have done this kind of work before, worked with the drafting of these agreements from both sides of the fence. So they're well-versed in how they're put together, and what they're supposed to say, and what is missing in some of the areas up here. And what they, they wanted to point out was if they find deficiencies in the report, they're not going to be specific, and they're going to say the deficiency exists in this area so that their answer will have to be given to them, rather than them give the answer that can just be plugged back in. So I, it was obvious to me, they had done this before and knew how it worked, so I had a little better feeling. And we talked about the city's comments and how we would incorporate those, and the suggestion was, and we all agreed around the table, that the cities could submit their comments individually, but also transmit those to the county so that their consultant can put all the comments in one place, and we'll have those as a collective voice, and then we'll submit ours as our individuals also. Like Jim, I'm, I've read, I'm not going to say 500 pages, but I've read all the pages dealing with the north-south portion of the corridor, which is the portion that runs from West Palm Beach to up to Cocoa. So that's my report to date.
Monty, you may want to comment on the letter you did send for clarification.
Yes. We had a final report that we'd received from the Federal Railroad Administration's engineer, Frank Fay, and it mentioned, and led to believe, that we were considering closing of some crossings. And considering was really not the correct word to use. They had recommended, as the safest alternative, as we heard in the report earlier, is no crossing at all, but the 14th Avenue, the angled crossing, and 21st Street. It was made clear to us early on that no crossing could be closed without the city's request to do so. And at our last council meeting, I heard loud and clear that that request wasn't coming through. So in my letter back to Mr. Fay, addressing some points in his, his report, I brought that up as well, and said those crossings would have to receive the treatments to make those eligible for the sealed corridor designation.
Mr. Kind of help me with this. There were earlier, a few, there was a deadline on state money for...
Grants?
For a grant, yes. Let's talk about that a little bit, because basically, we have done nothing on that. But go ahead.
That is correct. In order to apply for the grant, you have to have the design criteria of what is going to go in for, and this is for the quiet zone money. Our sales and the county both found out that we didn't have enough material to make a grant application. There was a letter that went from the county explaining that to Representative Mayfield, that, you know, that we just don't have enough information compiled. In the meantime, we've also talked to All Aboard Florida and Rusty Roberts, who said by December, I believe it is, we will have 95% complete of design of those crossing mechanisms they plan to use. That will give us a basis to find out how close to quiet zones it will come, and then we'll bring stuff back to the city council for your consideration. If we want to, A, apply for quiet zones, is the first question, and then the other is, what is going to be the additional cost exposure to the city if we do that? There is a lot of design criteria that has been discussed through All Aboard Florida that may meet that quiet zone designation. And if it doesn't, then even the horns at the intersections may be something that we could tolerate, as opposed to spending a lot of money on the quiet zone designs. But I think that's something that we will have to look at. But until we have those design criteria and the study, it is our understanding, and based on comments made from the Department of Transportation, the grant money probably will be in next year's budget as well for the opportunity to make those applications. The $10 million really was more designated for the south, where they had the commuter trains going in anyway, and I think that's, and they had some over in the Tampa Bay area as well.
It was at least my opinion that, personally, being against the railroad, you couldn't apply for, for money for a grant for quiet zones and be against it at the same time. In other words, so personally, I have not wanted to do that. You were first, though, I believe.
Well, I had a question about it, because I know Sebastian, I don't think there's anybody here from Sebastian, but I think Sebastian had given their city manager the go-ahead to go ahead and try to get some of these grants, and I'm trying to, you just kind of described some mechanics that kind of show the difficulties in getting that. Did Sebastian do something different that...
They did. Their Public Works Director, or Economic Development Director, whatever his title is, did some designs based on his past career experience. But there still was not design that you could apply for the grants. And I think what Sebastian did, and correct me if I'm wrong, Monty, sent a letter of intent saying that they would like to draw down on the grant money if it becomes available. I don't think they're going to make any reservation of grant money, especially if there's more demand than there is supply.
My question about the grants is, it's not a full grant. The city has to come up with the matching funds, correct?
Typically, on any state grant, there's matching. And it's usually a 50/50.
Yeah, okay.
And Frank, at that meeting today, promised he'd send me an email copy of the letter that they sent, so we'd have that to look at as well.
Mr. Turner?
Mr. Mayor, on this subject...
Go ahead.
To me, one of the major concerns we should have is that there's going to be a significant investment if this project goes forward. And I think you can oppose it and still be prepared to mitigate if it does go forward you can't control. So I can say, I don't have any problem being on both sides of that issue. The cost of putting in, they're going to put a significant increase in the amount of electronics and mechanical devices they're going to be at each intersection. Under current arrangements, it is our responsibility as a city to maintain those, and also to pay for an annual inspection of those. That is going to increase our costs going forward. To me, that is a major problem that we, as a community, should be identifying and saying that all, we have no problem if they want to make a bigger investment and put additional resources onto these intersections, on these crossings, but they should change, they should maintain them in the future, because it would make a significant increase in our annual costs to this city with absolutely no benefit to us if they do this and they don't agree to maintain it. So I think any of our, of our comments on this is that All Aboard Florida should pay for all the improvements and, in the, in the future, maintain them at their expense. Making the maintenance of all this at our expense, to me, is something we should, and this is something every single community along the corridor should agree on. Rather than having each community make independent, "Well, we don't like this. We don't like that." There should be some common elements that every single community buys into, and we have a joint, try to make a joint political comment on this. Now, this morning, or this afternoon, I guess it is afternoon, evening, the, the most interesting, and I think most powerful, argument on the EIS was the fact that the EIS is inaccurate. And the fact that they gave a very, a spurious count of boat traffic is an indication that the consultant failed to do due diligence in developing its data. Now, I read all 522, when I didn't read all 5, I did what Monty did. I read the ones dealing with the north-south corridor. And I was impressed by the lack of, the lack of detail that could be defended. There's a lot of assumptions, a lot of assumptions built into this, which I do not think will bear scrutiny in the long run. I don't know where they got their estimates from, but if they're anything like the way they counted the boat traffic, I would think we have a, there's a legitimate basis for a serious, a serious comments in negative about this EIS. And it may make the, you know, the Federal Railroad Agency, you know, delay approval or, there's nothing wrong here.
This was financed by...
All Aboard Florida financed it.
All Aboard Florida hired a consultant, actually, two consultants.
Well, the consultants were...
You're willing to correct us, if you like.
Yeah, no, as far as I know, the consultants were hired by All Aboard Florida under the direction of the Federal Railroad Administration, yes.
Do we have any idea what our, the increase to our budget would be if we were required to maintain these crossings?
Not until we see what the crossing improvements are going to be, and what Don said is correct. I mean, every new blinking light that goes on there, we are responsible for payment of maintenance. But that's going to be covered under our crossing agreements. We have in hand right now a proposed crossing agreement from All Aboard Florida that would make them a party to the crossing agreements. We have not signed that, and to my knowledge, the Indian River County has not signed that either. But that gives you room to negotiate what it actually, the impact is going to be. We have some very old crossing agreements with the East Coast Railroad that it's a minimal exposure to us, and it goes to the newer ones exposes us to more cost. I have concerns, and I think Monty agrees with this, that signing a new crossing agreement, not knowing what kind of facilities are going to be put there, also exposes us to an unknown cost, and we, we're not prepared to recommend that to the council at this point.
Yes, Mr. Hetty?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a comment on Don's comment. He, he said it's going to be our responsibility, but I think that the public should know and clearly understand that by our responsibility, that means our payment. All Aboard Florida, the railroad does all of the work. They just send us the bill. We don't have a choice about who they use. We don't have any control whatsoever whether they go to the lowest or the highest. We have zero control. The only thing that we're, the only thing we have to do is we have to pay the bill. And I think, Don, you're absolutely right, that if you're going to look for some common ground that the, the city is up and down the corridor can agree on, that common ground would be, if All Aboard Florida is going to come through, it should be at their expense, not just for the tracks, but for the future maintenance, so that we don't saddle our already overburdened taxpayers with additional cost.
If I can, Mr. Mayor.
By all means.
Thank you very much. And if you would bear this in mind, all council members, as you're moving forward, what I'm hearing out in the community, Don summed it up very well. The community expects the elected officials to be prepared. In the event that the project does go through, I hear many, many concerns on the speed, the noise, how loud are the horns going to be, and they want to know, well, okay, if it does come through, are we prepared? Then also about the money issue, the funds. There's enough folks out there in this community watching, and we have a fairly intelligent community here, they know there's costs associated with this project. They want to know, okay, how much is it going to, how much more is it going to be for us at the railroad crossings? They understand there's going to be more insurance. So there's enough information out there. They want us to be prepared, one way or the other. If it doesn't come through, it doesn't come through, but if it does, be prepared. I like Mr. Cordell's, when he was framing his comments, be prepared, be ready on both sides of the issue.
Mr. Comet, you're on the agenda here, and then we'll have Mr. Manson.
Well, really, you've just discussed anything I could tell you, tell you about crossing agreements. We did have a meeting, myself and the city manager and Monty, met with the county attorney and some of his staff, and Sebastian attorney. We spoke with legal counsel from All Aboard Florida and one of their engineers, and basically explained to them about, I mean, how can we make, just wholesale, make All Aboard Florida a third-party beneficiary to all these five crossing agreements, at least in our case, in the city of Vero Beach, before we know exactly what we can report to the council is what are our increased costs that, that doing this? And perhaps, maybe All Aboard Florida should cover some of that added expense. And we're still, obviously, when we get back, our engineering people can look at what our, and calculate what our additional costs might be under that scenario.
Just wondered if I could ask about this ordinance that we just received for the public. This is an ordinance that was passed in 1966 in the City of Vero Beach. It states it shall now, it shall be unlawful for any railroad train, a railroad car, or locomotive to be operated within or to be driven or operated through, through the City of Vero Beach at a greater rate of speed than 45 miles per hour.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that legally enforceable? Yes, go ahead.
That was an amended motion, and the amended motion was...
Original was 25.
Original was 25. Well, it says, it's hereby amended to read as follows, 25. That's, in 1966, it read 45, and, I mean, it read 45 at that time, then they downed it to 25, which I don't think is being enforced.
Okay, why don't we have Mr. Mattson for it, because he's a key player.
Mr. Mayor, before we move off that, I have a question. Is that legally enforceable?
That was my question.
I have my doubts because federal law...
So they, they passed an ordinance about speed limits, but it's not legally enforceable. What is the current federal rule on speeds to the City of Vero Beach? Isn't it 79?
I, I don't know.
That's what we were told. The Railroad Commission was told that the, the current maximum speed is 79.
In the, I don't know the answer to your question, but in the EIS, the 110 miles an hour didn't come as a mistake. Depending upon the upgrading of the tracks and so on, there are various speed limits. So the 110, if you, if you go to a bullet train at 160, then you have to take a bunch more steps, both as far as safety, rails, and so on. So I think the federal government rules upon the, the infrastructure and the equipment that's there, too. Bill, do you know better than I do about that one?
I think you're right. I think it's governed by the design speed of the tracks themselves, and if the tracks are upgraded to accommodate a higher speed, I don't think there's a posted speed limit like on a highway.
And if I'm, if I may, excuse me, Mr. Mattson and Mr. Mayor and Council, Councilwoman Turner, thank you for bringing that up. A lot of people saw that ordinance and they called right away. I did some research on that, and this is my understanding. When the code was codified in 86, that was left out. I think it was sometime in the mid 80s. So that piece of legislation was left out of our code. I'll do more research and report back to this board. But I first saw that and I said, hmm, this is interesting. Then I did the research.
And I'll pass it along to the county attorney.
Thank you very much.
Phil Mattson, Indian River County MPO. As always, it's a pleasure to be here before the council and, in this case, a joint meeting. And I don't know how much I really have to add, but I'll throw a few things out there you may or may not be aware of. And I want to commend you, first of all, on being diligent and keeping in front of the curve on this and really protecting the interests of the public. I commend you doing that. To begin with, I'll give you another date that Monty didn't mention, and this is October 21st. The Board of County Commissioners will be taking a first cut at the EIS at that point and taking a look at a memo written by the county attorney. The county attorney's taking the lead on the response to the EIS. He's got two teams working with him. One has been hired by the Public Works Department and it's the engineering team of CDM Smith. And they're taking a look at the technical side of the EIS. And that gets back to something very key that Mayor Winger said. We don't need generalizations. I'm afraid there'll be more traffic, things like that. So we've hired this team specifically to take a look at the data, the data assumptions, the counts that are in there, the species inventories, the wetlands, the hydroic soils, all the technical side of it. But in going to the teleconferences with the consultant that we've been having regularly, I've learned they're also looking at it, I guess you could say, methodologically, if that's a word. Was the analysis done on a whole census track level when it should have been done on a census block level? Is this the same approach to the various things in there that other entities have been forced to take and so forth? So they're taking a look at really the data in it, how the data was analyzed, and also how the whole thing was prepared. I think that should give you some comfort to the layman who's reading 522 pages, all of which I've read, and, you know, said, oh my God, you know, this is blowing my mind. What do I know about vibration and noise in these units they're using and so forth? So just to let you know that it's been diligent response at the county level, and it actually started before the formal document was released. I mean, county staff was collecting inventories and so forth and looking at it, you know, way before that. Couple other dates, obviously, November 5th is key, and I hope to see everyone there, really to see what sort of comment, forum is acceptable to the FRA in the conducting of this hearing, whether it's an open forum, whether it's written comments, et cetera. There will be some mechanism of getting that information out. And then Monty did mention November 18th, which is the date we expect to wrap up our almost finished draft of that technical side. I guess the other side of the county's response is the legal side. They've hired an attorney that specializes in railroad issues called Brian Cave and Associates from Washington, DC. They've seen it all, they've seen it all come and go, and they have encyclopedic knowledge of whether or not things were put forth legally from the correct standpoint. And I know the county attorney, as I mentioned, is coordinating the response, has been quite in touch with the Brian Cave firm all the, you know, on an ongoing basis. We've been trying to coordinate with the cities as well on a lot of other issues, obviously the crossing agreements, as Mr. Coment has mentioned, the technical side with the Public Works Directors, and I applaud Monty for being out there and taking a look at the crossings and the field review, collecting data, supplying us with data. The devil will be in the details, and those details will be forthcoming, both on the 21st and on the 18th of November. I don't have a lot more to add. I don't really have a lot of specific technical detail at this point, as a lot of that hasn't been even released to the county commission staff. But I will keep you in the loop, and I'd be happy to come back at any point in the future and keep you apprised of it.
I have a, a commenter, a question, it would be of you and Wayne Boe. You know, it strikes me that we should be in total unity as much as possible with the county. And that being the case, you know, the county passed a resolution, and it says what it says, but the last whereas is, is opposes the railroad in unequivocal terms. In fact, I'll read it. Whereas has now been, become necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to say in clear and unequivocal terms that opposes All Aboard Florida's effort to force this high-speed passenger rail project through Indian River County while having the cost of the project borne by the taxpayers. It's got about six other whereases. Whereas the first priority of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners is the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the county. Whereas All Aboard Florida proposes high-speed passenger rail service will increase railroad traffic noise, railroad vibrations within Indian River County, thereby creating a genuine detriment and threat to the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Indian River County, as well as irreparable harm to Indian River County's natural resources and historical resources. And there are other whereases, but I personally think we, it, it would it be useful to the county and would it be useful to us, Wayne, if we joined in something very similar, if not identical?
I would certainly move that we would go forward with the resolution comparable to the county's. And I think it is important that we show a united front and a strong front, that we make this statement that we are opposed to All Aboard.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would, I have this newspaper article that was written right after that resolution, and three county commissioners commented. May I quote them out of this newspaper?
You may.
Chairman Peter O'Brien, quote, "I am not against rail, but I don't think this is a project for our community," unquote. Commissioner Bob Solari said he feels all this, well, this is not a quote, "All Aboard Florida has continually misrepresented itself to the Indian River County residents." Quote, "If All Aboard Florida hadn't misled us from the start, maybe we wouldn't be here today," unquote. Commissioner Wellesley Davis, at the end of the day, well, let me preface it. Commissioner Davis said he was voting for the resolution because he felt it was time for the county to take a stand against All Aboard Florida. Quote, "At the end of the day, we've got to make some decisions versus just opinions," Davis said. "I just don't see anything from this project benefiting our community," unquote. Thank you.
Further comment from the Railroad High-Speed Rail Commission? Any of you before we open the public comment?
Well, one thing, I'd like to, I'd like to add that we don't receive anything from All Aboard Florida in compensation for anything that happens here. They don't pay real estate taxes to the City of Vero Beach for the real property to the city of...
Excuse me, before Phil leaves, I'd, I'd like...
Mr. Mattson, could you please come back?
I'm sorry, Don, I didn't mean, but he was getting ready to walk out the door.
Okay, because what I say may affect him. Right. Sorry.
Go ahead, Don, finish your comment.
The, the real property taxes on all the railroad property through the state is collected by the state, not by the local governments or the counties. I don't know what happens to that money. But it seems to me that if we're going to incur future cost increases, that that would be a source, that would not be a source of money from the general public, that would help pay, pay our, our increased costs if we do, if we do that. And we should have a conversation with, with the state or the county if the county is getting those funds.
Yeah, I, I don't know the specifics of where that money goes. I will bring it back to the county attorney, though. If, if you would like me to do that.
Phil, could you give the public an overview of how this November the 5th meeting is going to, I mean, you don't have to be there at 3:30 and stay till 7:00, but sort of how they're, how they're putting that together?
Yeah, I did a little research on how similar ones were conducted, and it is something of a drop-in, drop-out format. You don't have to stay for the whole time. And there's normally different mechanisms for commenting. I've seen them conducted where there was a, address the public, address everyone type forum with a certain time limit. I've also seen them with a Dropbox surveys and that sort of thing. I think you'll have both options. I don't know the specifics of how exactly it's going to be conducted, except that the Richardson Center is a wonderful facility for it, probably the best place we could have picked here. If there are audiovisual presentations, as I'm expecting, there's going to be a lot of ways to take a look at those presentations and so forth. So, you know, another follow-up thing, I'm making a homework list as a result of this meeting. So one thing I'll do is try to get more specific advice from the FRA on the agenda, commenting structure and format. I'll just tell you, we did try to do that once, and we didn't really get any answers. I mean, we got a lot of kind of vague stuff I get from my teenagers, you know.
I, I just want to make sure the public understands they don't have to devote four hours of their life.
Absolutely not. Any, any attendance, any time they can devote to it, any comment is absolutely valid and appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Representative Mayfield, it's our honor to have you here. You're, came just exactly at the right time.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my apologies, I had a conference call that I had to be on with some people. So, you know, the reason I'm here is Ken Deage called and said, would you come speak at the joint meeting with the Rail Commission on All Aboard Florida? He heard me on the radio speaking, and I'm like, sure. But, you know, I'm against this, and I've, I've spoken with, you know, with All Aboard Florida group. And, and the thing I think that we need to stay focused on as well, that I don't think we've done enough on, is the public safety. We just had a, a press conference down in, where was I at? Jupiter, down in Jupiter, with the hospital down there, the medical center down there. And, you know, they brought out some good points that we haven't focused enough on, and that is the public safety. The EMS people in the hospital has not been brought in on this discussion and the effect that it's going to have. So I've reached out to the hospital, as well as the county commission, and asked them if they would be interested in putting together a press conference to make it, you know, make, to get it out there to people that we need to start working on this and looking at it. You know, I have, I have nothing against the private company doing a rail system, and we've had this discussion with, you know, with All Aboard Florida. My concern are state dollars that could be, that could flow into this project by means of economic incentive dollars for Palm Beach and Miami to receive, and Orlando to receive for this project. And I think that, and I'm, certainly will be watching that this session, as, as well as I'm sure some of the other House members. You know, we have a, a resolution or a joint letter that the, that the House members for St. Lucie and Indian River, and I believe Martin County, have signed off on, that we're going to be presenting at the public hearings that are going to be coming up in St. Lucie. Well, all the public hearings that are going to be coming up, I'll be in the St. Lucie, Indian River County one. But, and again, like I said, some of the concerns is just not, is the public safety, but it's also money that the state could be filtering through economic incentive dollars that we need to be paying attention to. You know, and, and people will say, well, all private companies get economic incentive dollars to come to Florida. Well, this is true, and we do that. But the big difference here is that these economic incentive dollars that are going to be given to Miami and Palm Beach in order to promote if, and again, this is an if, we just need to watch for it, that they'll be getting will be at a detriment to our community with the trains coming through our community. And that was the one thing that I wanted to make sure, and maybe that's what Mr. Deage was referring to that I spoke about on the, on the radio, that, you know, this is an area that we, we really need to be paying attention to, public safety and other economic incentive dollars that they could be getting on it. And that was really why I wanted to come in and speak, and, you know, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know this isn't the answering question forum, but I'll, I'll be in my office if anybody wants to step over and ask any questions afterwards.
Counsel or commissioner, any questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I think we should open the public comment. I would ask you to make your comments short. There are a great many of you here, and if each of you took more than three minutes, we could be here a long time.
Thank you very much. My name is Honey Manous. I'm a resident of the city. I'm also chair of the Indian River Neighborhood Association Executive Committee, and that's on the behalf that I speak right now. Earlier this year, we had people from different groups started meeting because of concerns about the high-speed rail. And our purpose was not to shut it down, rather, it was to identify impacts and expect that they would be mitigated by All Aboard Florida so that it would not destroy our quality of life. The law allowed that, and we were inserting ourselves into that process. We agreed we would be a coalition with that specific purpose. We are called TIC, T-I-C. We've been very quiet. T-I-C, Train Impact Coalition. There are others taking different oppositional roads, and while we invited them to our meetings, we kept to our solitary purpose, and that was to specifically identify impacts as the National Council on Environmental Quality specified. And that quality is to both the human and the natural environments. We're preparing ourselves for the release of the EIS so that we could address our concerns. And our group grew larger as more people became aware of what we were doing. And we have people representing interests throughout our county, and we have compiled a list of what is called local knowledge. This is the knowledge that is often missed when these kinds of impact statements are released, and it gives us leverage as we seek mitigation. This knowledge goes, then, to our professionals, our staff, and our consultants for further study, and they translate that into language that's acceptable to respond to the EIS. And I'd like to just give you an example of the, some of the groups that are participating in this so that you can understand the depth of our work. The Indian River and Sebastian Chambers of Commerce, they're very concerned about business interests, how they're going to be impacted with the closings. As a matter of fact, as we speak right now, they are in meeting, discussing that EIS for their own concerns. We have Main Street, Vero Beach, the Osceola, and Original Town Neighborhoods, the Heritage Center. Noise and vibrations are major concerns for them, and these are measurable impacts. The County Historical Society has been meeting with us. There are a lot of sites adjacent to the tracks. These are nationally protected. The Cultural Center. We have the Archaeological, the Old Vero Mansite, which was mentioned. This is absolutely huge. They're on the National Register, and you have to wonder about what the vibrations from the train is going to do to the soil as they dig, the potential for damages there, very problematic. We also have the Gifford Progressive League. They have two crossings, 32 trains and additional freight is entirely going to block off that community. That's called social justice. The Sebastian Property Owners Association, the Friends of St. Sebastian River, they're all impacted. We also have the school board meeting with us. They're very concerned over school buses, children's safety is a very, very high priority on these statements. We also have Gifford Medical, Middle School where there are walkers. The Sheriff's Department has been meeting with us. They're concerned over response times and critical situations. We have the hospital district meeting with us also. Doctors' offices, surgery centers, nursing homes are right there next to the tracks. They all have fragile patients. The impact from noise and vibrations, very important. The airport, Eric's been with us. Conservation and wildlife representation. There's a list of protected species, flora and fauna, and they're all there. They're all there, ready to be impacted. We also have the three governments that are along the railroad tracks meeting with us, staff and elected officials. I'm very grateful to Frank Badenavi, who's up in Sebastian. He had the experience in California with this issue, and he first told us about cooperating agencies. And as fast as our three governments made application to be a cooperating agency, swiftly denied. Jim, Monty, and Amelia have been very cooperative. And in the county, Chris, Phil, Stan, and Peter O'Brien, who is also a link into the Treasure Coast... Peter O'Brien, who is also a link into the Treasure Coast Regional Council. This has all been, you know, really a very huge effort on the part of these people. A lot of good work was done. And then when the EIS was released, it was very deficient. There are over 30 indices that are missing from these categories. This is a list of them. There's no ridership studies. There are no detailed track plans. There's nothing about grade crossings. No historic resources are itemized. There's no minority population data, no noise or vibration reference tables that we can even work with. There's no rare species listed, on and on and on. Personally, I was shocked. This was not professional. But then, along comes a brand-new development last week. All Aboard is now seeking funding from what is called private activity bonds. When it was just a RIF loan, they were required to do the EIS. But now these private activity bonds, this is where the government, either federal, state, or local, is a conduit for a private loan. And these are complicated matters, and I do not have any expertise that I can discuss them any further. But from my understanding and what I'm hearing from some of the people I've been consulting is that an EIS is not going to be required if they secure 100% funding in this matter. And we don't have any details about this new funding. There will be a government conduit for these PABs, but we don't know if it's going to be federal, state, or local. And the important thing is our coalition exists to protect ourselves from impacts. That was what we determined in the beginning, and we've not abandoned that. We're not going to abandon the work responding to the EIS. We're still obligated to that December 3rd deadline in case they're still going to go after the RIF loan. But we have to take it further now that we know they're seeking the PABs, and that's where our effort has got to be political. The government is where these private activity bonds originate, and I'm suggesting that we coordinate this effort between our three governments. I already started hearing reference up here, so that we have one singular response from our county. We have the professional response ongoing right now to the EIS, which is very good, but we need to unify that political response. Perhaps you want to have another interlocal agreement to work on this matter, or you may have another suggestion for implementing any kind of coordination. Either way, the people of this community absolutely need your help. We can't be fragmented at this point in time. We can't be burdened so that we're duplicating each other's work. The interests and concerns are not limited to political boundaries right now. We've got to stand together, and our coalition is here to assist you. We've done a lot of work. There's been a lot of good people behind all this, and I thank them all right now, and I thank you for your considerations. Would you be interested in having these copies?
Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Comment, I mean, you know, the idea of an interlocal agreement. I guess the question I have is, how do we work with the other two entities? Is that a good idea? Should we be exploring it and so on?
Excuse me, Mr. Madison. Ms. Voss.
I have in my suggestions up there, and I have talked to the city manager before on this issue, and he framed it as far as a memorandum of understanding. We have to have some type of understanding. How can we work as a city with the county and send it over to them?
And Sebastian.
And Sebastian. And Mr. O'Connor can expand on that a little bit if he wants. He and I have had these chats.
Yeah, one of the things Mr. Deage wanted was some type of document or a piece of paper that shows that we are in a cooperative relationship with those two local governments. And to me, the easiest was the MOU where we just sort of outlined what it is that we're doing. The realities, though, I think we're showing that that is actually taking place. Honey's organization, which I've attended a couple of those meetings, Monty's attended, I think Amelia's been to all of them, and you can see the coordination that is taking place there. The county consultants, as of even today, are looking at the entire corridor within Indian River County. So, I think in practicality, it is taking place. If we want to send something over to the county and say, "Here's an MOU," then, you know, we can do something by resolution. We obviously are doing a resolution, one way or the other, on the support or opposition to All Aboard Florida. At the same time, we could do one and just say that we want to work in a cooperative spirit with the county and the city of Sebastian. Also, in my conversation with Mr. Deage, said that, in my opinion, the Railroad Commission is really your lead group right now. They're the folks that should be putting stuff together to sort of feed to the council and come back with recommendations to the city council of what kind of documents that we want to submit. In Monty's conversation today, we would like to get that stuff to the consultant for the county so they can incorporate that in, and then we, as a city, can also send, and it may duplicate what is being put into that report, but I think we could make our own positions aware to the regulatory agencies. So, I guess the bottom line to that is doing a MOU might be the easiest.
May I say something?
Yes.
Once this is affected with a close collaboration between the county and the city, why stop there? Why not reach out beyond county lines and get something a little more regional?
And that is happening as different communities have been passing resolutions. Different members of council serve on, either it's the Treasure Coast League of Local Governments, the Regional League of Cities. So, we're aware, I mean, it's all pretty coordinated. There are other communities that have already done these resolutions, but when we meet with them, we pass our resolutions along as well, so we can definitely do that and make sure that it's happening as we coordinate with the county.
Thank you.
I serve on the Treasure Coast Council or League of Governments, whatever it is. And we did pass a unanimous resolution that we would bring it back to our city council for the actions you described, city and county commissions, four counties and whatever number of cities. Of course, we're a little dependent upon each of those cities taking the action, and today, we're taking, we're looking at our position. But I was assured by the others, Fort Pierce and so on, that they would do likewise. We'll see.
Just as a question, I mean, who is doing the coordination? I mean, obviously, if everybody's doing this, there's got to be probably one point or one organization that has all of these documents collected. I'd like to see them. I mean, somehow or another, you're going to have to bring everything together. Who's going to do that?
We have used the NPO in Indian River County as sort of the agency that reflects the entire corridor. Phil Madison has done a very good job of compiling the information. We have seats on the technical committees of the NPO, as well as seats on the board of the NPO. The elected officials are on the board. Monty and some of his staff are on the technical committee, along with Tim McGary. So, we have input, and that's, again, using that agency. Phil has been delegated by the county as sort of the guy that does a lot of the interfacing with the consultants.
May I say something? To me, unless I'm misinterpreting, it sounds like a loose confederation. What I had in mind was something a little more binding, structured, and glued together, rather than a loose confederation.
With that being said, if it's okay with the city council, and Mr. City Manager touched on it, you know, with a memorandum of understanding, you know, we could outline a few things that also will show the community that we are all standing together within this county. I've heard enough today where I can put something together and send it to you all. You can take a look at it and then go from there with it. I think it would be helpful to your community.
I think your comment is right, though. I mean, in the meeting I was at, Martin County was very strident. Indian River County, whether it was Commissioner Peter O'Brien or myself, or the representative Jerome from Sebastian, were very strident. Part less, well, I won't name any communities, but in the other county, they were less so. So, I think it is true. I think your point is valid.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Sure. Monique Miller, and I'm from Melbourne Beach, and I work very closely with the Florida Not All Aboard Organization up in Brevard County. And I'm kind of amended what I was going to say today to address some of the specific issues I hear here today, which is that really the city is asking, "What can we do to help, you know, stop this? This is what we decide we don't want?" And I just kind of want to reiterate a few points. First of all, it is not at all clear which of the two government-subsidized mechanisms they will use to fund this project, but what we do know is that both of them are government-subsidized funding mechanisms. One of them is about $500 million worth, and that would be if they use the private activity bonds. And by the way, one of the things that you do not have to worry about coordinating is my understanding that if they do seek private activity bonds, they are doing that with five counties, and three counties will be completely left out of the loop on that. So, you know, Martin County, Indian River County, and St. Lucie County will not be a part of that, and so we could have an entire funding mechanism passed right through without, you know, having any say in it at all as Indian River County, unfortunately. But getting back to the subsidized aspect of this, I've written an article. There's going to be a series. You kind of brought up this thing is 500 pages, and I think there's about 1,000 pages of appendices to it as well, so it's a lot for somebody to digest. We've gotten together a group of specialists, and we're digging into five areas of impact, and we are going to be doing a series of articles. I hope TC Palm doesn't mind my letting this out of the bag, but this will be the first one, and I'll hand that out to you guys. And the five areas of impact are environmental, safety, infrastructure, alternatives, and life and business. And so, we'll dig into each one of those areas with an editorial each week, so that gives people an opportunity to respond to the comments period that we have for the environmental impact study. And it's extremely important, regardless of which, you know, what we hear in the news that they're going to go a different avenue. It's very important that that go on record and that as many people as possible, this is going to impact our lives, go out there and please make sure your comments are heard. Another thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, I believe you, as most of the other county and municipal governments along the path, have been requested by All Aboard Florida to add them as a third-party beneficiary to the crossing agreements. There is really, I'm not a lawyer, but there really is no reason why they can't achieve anything they would need to achieve in terms of like paying for upgrades and stuff like that through their parent company. There's really only one reason that they'd want to do that, and that is to maintain a separation, a financial separation between Florida East Coast and All Aboard Florida, because heaven forbid the projections turn out as Casey's presentation has certainly forecast, and they would have to have that financial impact on the parent company. By keeping those two things separate, you're helping them achieve what they're really trying to achieve. And I would ask that you really consider not doing that, so not honoring that request. And the last thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that the EIS is very specific. It's for a passenger rail service between Orlando and Miami. Well, if you upgrade your infrastructure, but you're a freight operation, you don't have anything that addresses, "How does this new infrastructure, new trains, impact my freight transport?" We don't have security or safety issues that have been addressed. We have $30 million that have gone this year to help upgrade, that have been allocated to upgrade the infrastructure for Big Sugar's train. They have a train that meets up with FEC in Fort Pierce. And we also know that they've been investing in ethanol production, and so that means that we have very volatile materials that are going to be coming through, and we don't know at what rate, but we know that's significant, you know, that could have a big impact on our environment. Nothing like that is addressed in the EIS because this exclusively deals with the passenger side, and that's a big concern. It seems like there's a big, big part of this that is missing because there is a whole other part of their business that will address that. And the last piece that I wanted to bring to your attention is that there have been ongoing discussions with Amtrak. Now, if I'm a company that has never been in passenger rail before in my entire life, why would I want to go into this for the first time for 32 trains out of my entire organization? It might make sense to outsource something like that to Amtrak. And there are already projections for train stations to go into Brevard County. They're not funded, but it is in the transportation planning documents. And this is something that would be a concern to me because two years ago, I think it was two years ago, the federal regulations were changed and legislation was passed that now brings to Florida the responsibility of subsidizing any lines that are under 750 miles within the state. So, if they make a lease agreement with Amtrak and say, "You can use our lines to do this passenger rail service," they're going to get that money no matter what it is, but we're going to have to fill the holes on the back end, and that could be a very long, long, and painful subsidy. So, that's just another piece of it that I wanted to bring to your attention. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
All right. Next.
Tammy, I have the other power point. Anyways, I'm Keith Guy. I'm a commercial rail attorney, developer here in the city of Vero Beach, and also I sit on the Economic Development Council of the county, as well as the Torres and Development Council of Indian River County's Board. And I just came today, I wanted to offer an opinion and some facts, you know, just to consider why you should consider potentially working with All Aboard Florida as the commission and the board has mentioned. And again, I'm grateful that both All Aboard Florida and all of the cities and counties are taking a hard look at this on the negative sides and the positive sides. But I'd like to just run through a few points and then move on. You know, facts are stubborn things, and, you know, whatever all of our opinions are and inclinations dictates passions, facts are facts, and we have the evidence. So, it's just a quote from John Adams. So, I put together some facts that I thought would be prudent to take a look at with rail in Florida. Florida's population in 1890 was just a little under 400,000. Today, we're at 19 million. We'll be at over 20 million next year. The question is, in 2050, when our county had 8,000 people in it in 1960, or the city did, and we're going to be at 31 million people, an 80% increase, another 13 million people in our state, is how are they going to get from point A to point B? My bigger concern is how do we make and avoid the Treasure Coast from looking like South This is what we have to think about in alternative infrastructure. According to FDOT, the annual average daily traffic counts right now in our county, right down the road at Florida US 1 and 60, and out at I-95 and 60, are 23,000 and 40,000 cars per day passing by right now. That's 22,995,000 cars a year passing through our county. You know, we have to ask ourselves, do we want to go to six, seven, eight, 10 lanes of traffic? Do we want 30, 40, 50 million cars passing through our county, our city, in as early as 20 years? Do we want the additional taxpayer cost of the added lanes? The added pollution? The dust, the traffic jams? We have to think of these things when we're thinking of just the rail as well. You know, what is the alternatives? And I'd like to just stop here one second. You know, I appreciate, again, the concerns against it, but we have a population in our four counties of over 1.5 million. If we look at some of the improvements that may be available, as the proactive piece has been with Monty and the other pieces, on dust on the rail and stuff, it's a possibility that the safety improvements of the rail may in fact allow us improved safety, less dust, less congestion in our rail. We have to think of both sides of this equation. The reduced vehicle accounts in our city, the rail is projected, and I'll show, to take a number of cars off our road. The improved infrastructure, and it gives us an alternative. Maybe we don't have a stop today, but 100 years ago in 1920, Vero Beach was founded because the rail stopped here. So, we have to ask ourselves 100 years from now, what are citizens going to be doing? How are they going to be moving? Where are they going to be locating? How are we going to maintain our quality of life, our environment, our ecosystem? On freight, I just want to make a comment on freight because I hear freight, freight, freight all the time. Look, if they wanted more freight, they would have never even started this show. They don't need to do anything for freight. In 2008, there were 24 trains going up and down the rail at the peak of our economy. Today, there's 14. On the 14 trains that are there now, it's something like well over 50% are coming back empty, and you can get the facts from FEC if you want to know there are empty cargo trains coming back. In addition to that, you've got CSX as a huge competitor going out to Lake Okeechobee. They've already got 20 million square feet of global logistics centers in place with Duda and Likes Brothers, so you've got huge alternatives to freight. At some point in time with freight, it's cheaper to stay on the ship. You've got Savannah, you've got Norfolk, you've got everything else. There's only so many freight trains they can put on the tracks. Are they going to go after all the freight they can? I definitely would if I was the business. Is it going to affect us? Well, maybe. I mean, we've got a long way down the road before you even get one more train on the track just to fill the stuff coming out of Panama going north. So, you have to think about freight and the alternatives that freight could be, and you have to just ask yourself... have to just ask yourself, if they wanted more freight, why did they even put themselves through this? I just pointed out, you know, Florida, you know, why is it the right choice of business? Why are 20 million people here? Reason number four, we've got great infrastructure. Reason number six, we've got a great quality of life. And, you know, All Aboard Florida, it may not be the total answer. It may be a scary problem today. It may be a safety problem. It may be an environment problem. It may be an eco problem. But all our alternatives to transportation offer the exact same problems, and at possibly a far greater level. So we have to ask, is All Aboard Florida an opportunity for us to be part of the infrastructure solution, or is it part of the problem? We still have to solve our infrastructure, one way or the other, and it's coming through this county. As a matter of fact, when the county voted last week at the Board of County Commissioners, one of the memo items was FDOT meeting up at the Knights of Columbus in two weeks for six-laneing US-1 from 53rd Street to 510. Now we've got 510 being a four-lane, we don't even have the money to four-lane 510 in this county to evacuate our citizens during a hurricane. That's been pushed out to 2020. And here they are, building six lanes on US-1 just to push these people from South Florida through us to North Florida. It's not 22 million residents in 140,000-population county using these roads. It's how do we get them through here with the least amount of disturbance to our quality of life and our safety and our economy? You know, the demand, I just put this up, in short, Florida was developed by rail. Florida's economy is dependent on rail. And Florida is going to require an alternative transportation infrastructure to move these vast amounts of people. On the economic front, there is another side. You know, All Aboard Florida does offer us as taxpayers, as citizens of this county, of the city. In the state, $6.4 billion in direct economic impact to Florida's economy over the next eight years. That translates to about $653 million in federal, state, local tax revenue through 10,000 jobs, thousands of jobs in this county. I believe the figure, and I think you all have heard it, it's roughly $35 million impact to this county. We haven't had these projects. And that may be short-term, and yes, maybe they're going to move through, you know, 32 times a day, but what else is going to move 10 million people through our county 24 hours a day? On the environment, it's estimated that if this train comes and it works, 3 million people off of our roads, significant reduction to greenhouse gases. As Mayor Winger pointed out earlier, probably the number one concern is our lagoon. Leveraging the existing quarter means minimal impact to our natural resources. And, you know, I want to say I've heard many facts, and I'm not a scientist, I'm not a biologist. I just want to point out that I do know, while I'm not that, that taking and adding four, six, eight, and 10 lanes, and taking up thousands of acres of our land, and dumping the resulting drainage off of those roads, will do nothing but further increase pollution to our lagoon. And that there is an opportunity here to greatly reduce the pollution discharge into our lagoon along the 100 miles of train track that it will go through the four counties. I just brought this slide up. It's kind of relevant to what you spoke of earlier, and I'm going to give it to Monty, and he can pass it around. But as far as money, the RIF program, the Railroad Rehabilitation Improvement Financing Program, this is right off their page, the eligible applicants, number two is state and local governments. So, you know, I would ask the city, as they have done, and I've seen today, which I'm very pleased with, to go to the FRA and to RIF. You know, it says right here from FRA, our leadership programs, grants, and loans, please visit our website at FRA.gov. They have $35 billion sitting at the FRA, and here is 1.2 billion of it going to 26 other states. So if All Aboard Florida is going to, if I use the negative side of this, and the not All Aboard railroad us through Florida, we might as well take advantage of the grants. These are not loans, grants that are available to us to possibly maintain that future infrastructure that they or jointly may put in place, or that we can put in place our own. So there are sources just besides the state, and there's money sitting there that was allocated for these high-speed rail systems that are being built around this country. Here, Monty. The real question about these RIF loans and the others is, why aren't we applying? And how is it different than any FHA loan or VA loan of probably well over 50% of the homes in our city, certainly our county? It's the exact same loan programs in a different environment to businesses instead of homeowners. On cost, you know, the city, we have to realize, that's $1.5 billion loan. According to FDOT, currently, 2014, one mile of one lane of I-95 is $2 million a mile. One lane of US-1 through this county is $2 million a mile. If you want to add up billions and billions and billions of taxpayer dollars, put a few more lanes from I-95 from Miami to Orlando, and a few more lanes on US-1 through all our counties, and get the traffic picture I pointed out earlier. Final question, is All Aboard Florida part of the problem? Transportation infrastructure that we all have to live and fight and breathe for, or is it part of the solution? So I appreciate your time today, council, commission, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, who's next?
I live in Winter Beach, but I consider Vero Beach my home. And I retired from over 30-year career in systems analysis where we had to deal with facts. And so I've honed a pretty good capacity for distinguishing between what is fact and what is posing as fact. And I haven't come out to oppose or support All Aboard Florida. I came out to support facts, dealing with reality. And I am encouraged, and I thank you for the time to speak, and I'm encouraged by the comments of the council. I believe you're very capable people, and you understand these things. And I know you have some predispositions, some of you have expressed them, but I believe you're open enough to see that the process is a fair and honorable one. And with that, I'd like to make a few brief comments. I'll try to keep them brief. One of the things I wanted to mention, we talked about speed limits briefly, there is a, the type of equipment that they use to move very high-speed trains in the rest of the world is all-electric. They're electrified systems. What All Aboard Florida is going to use is diesel-electric. There is a technological limit to the speed of diesel-electric that's currently 125 miles an hour. The FRA allows that speed to be achieved where there are no grade crossings. And consequently, the section from Cocoa to Orlando will have that 125-mile maximum. In areas, in the less urban areas that we happen to be in here, they do allow 110. That's a limit the FRA has established. I just wanted to make that comment. I wanted to talk about safety, because I've heard a lot of misinformation about safety, but I've also heard some legitimate concerns. And I just wanted to make a few points. Currently, you have grade crossings where people can pull the illegal maneuver that gets most of them killed. Most of the deaths by train impact are caused by people trying to weave around the closing. Because AAF project is going to comply with sealed corridor, they're going to eliminate that possibility. That's what sealed corridor does for grade crossings. And, but you have to remember that grade crossings, people say, well, how come we're stuck with the maintenance? Well, the grade crossing exists because the people want it to exist, because they want to cross the grade. It doesn't exist because the railroad wants it. So if you want something, you have to pay for it. So, you know, I realize that you're, we're making improvements, you would be making improvements, you wouldn't be, but All Aboard Florida is going to make sealed corridor improvements, but those improvements benefit the public safety. Now, there was, there are, there was a concern raised about, gee, trains going 110 miles an hour through the area where we have parks and, you know, people, parking lots and whatnot. Well, there's a couple of ways of looking at that, but my first question is, well, have you talked to All Aboard Florida about this and asked them how that might be mitigated? How that safety could be increased in areas where you might have that kind of a problem? That, in other words, address the problem specifically, and talk with the people, and say, what can we do to make sure that this isn't a problem? I mean, currently, you have, what, 14 freights a day? But most of those are running at night, so you don't have too much daytime freight. But when you had 24 a day, I bet a fair number were running at night. By the way, I wanted to mention, I live within a quarter-mile of the freight line. So, but I'm not one of these people that, because I live within a quarter-mile of freight line, and it's going to add some high-speed rail, and I think my property dollars are going to go down. When I bought the house, the railroad was there. So the other thing I want to say is that with traffic delays, the timing on this, if at 110 miles an hour or anything approaching that, is roughly 48 seconds from the time the first gate starts to go down to the time the last gate opens up. That's for a train crossing. That mean, now, so that if you're thinking about, oh, is that going to have significant delays? Well, consider that, and the trains are going to operate over a 15-hour period through Vero Beach. Assuming everything is on time, the earliest train that would go through Vero Beach would be 7:30 in the morning, the last train 10:30 at night. So in that 15-hour period, you have 900 minutes. 48 seconds for 32 trains is 25.6 minutes. 25.6 represents slightly over 3% of the time. So you have, or slightly, actually, it's slightly less, I believe, it's 2.8%. So you have over a 97% chance of never encountering a train when you, of not encountering a train when you come there. If you do come there, you're not going to wait 48 seconds unless you happen to get there just as the gates start to come down. The expected time of arrival gives you an expect, I mean, the expected delay time is about half that, 24 seconds, because it's a random event. You don't time your arrival with a train, the train doesn't time its arrival with you, so it's a random event. So even if you are stopped, it isn't going to be anywhere near as long as getting stopped for a traffic light. I dare say, having driven down US-1 a number of times, or even taken the alternate route on Indian River Boulevard where there are now two new traffic lights, the chances of getting stopped by a traffic light are fairly significant. So, I mean, worrying about eight seconds one way or the other, I think is unreasonable. Train noise. FRA data indicates that the sound of a train horn is 100 times louder than the sound of the freight rolling stock moving through the area. So you silence the train horn, you've done a lot to address the noise issue. And sealed corridors is going to give you, all the costly changes necessary will be paid for, so that you can go ahead and then apply for a quiet zone designation to the FRA. And from what I understand, in most cases, all you'll have to do is erect a sign warning people in both directions that the horns don't sound for trains, and making application. So it should not be a costly process. By the way, the other thing to consider is that quiet zone designations being paid for by All Aboard Florida is going to benefit you, because the FEC freights are going to be made quiet. And another thing they're going to do is they're going to be realigning the track and respecking the track so that it's in better alignment. That's going to reduce tremendous amount of the vibration that you get from slightly misaligned track. And so this question about vibration and noise, I think is, it's a red herring. I don't believe it can hold water. I think it has a huge stretch of the imagination to call an RIF loan a subsidy, unless you really think that every time somebody gets a mortgage that is FHA or VA-backed, that's a subsidy? Are we going to start picketing people in front of the loan officer? You shouldn't do that. And by the way, if that's the way you really feel, then that's a process for one of the members of the House of Representatives or United States Senator. This is not the body to be dealing with that question. How they get their funding, really, I would submit is none of the business of this committee. I mean, individually, it's yes, and fine, but to see that in a resolution, I think that's a big mistake. And I think it degrades the impact of any potential resolution that you would make. I think you need to be serious so that it's not perceived by others as not in my backyard, I'm just against it, we're going to pile on anything we can in there. So...
How much more do you have?
Very little.
Okay.
I want to talk about, just briefly, all about freight. The freight coming through the Panama Canal is not going to be freight coming down from Jacksonville. Right now, that freight that can't get through the canal, that comes on these big ships, is all floated in the West Coast, carried by rail to Jacksonville, and then it goes by either CSX or FEC southbound. And the massive amount of FEC's business is carrying freight southbound to the urban areas of South Florida. They've stated that 70% of their, their equipment goes back empty on the northbound side. So there's a huge capacity to absorb northbound freight. Now, you will have greater northbound freight, because some of the East Coast freight that comes across country would, could conceivably come through FEC, or it might just go to Jacksonville and go from there north. We don't know. And as far as, you know, the Orlando, the contention that getting to Orlando by the FEC using freight, doesn't make any sense, because they're prohibited from using that new corridor that parallels 528 for freight, and you already got CSX going up to Orlando from Miami, so why would they put it on FEC? Go to Jacksonville so they can give it to CSX to come down south? That doesn't make any sense. Finally, I was very disappointed in the Indian River County resolution, and I would caution you and urge you, do not ditto that thing. I, looking, I was, had a hard time finding it. And I went looking for it, because I couldn't find a proposal that you had online for a resolution. And just looking over these, there are 20 whereases. A number of them are just boilerplate motherhood statements, and that's typical. But of the 12 that had, I mean, I found 12 of them that were either highly dubious, irrelevant, or would be very hard, I think, to substantiate factually. I think the mayor made a very good point. If you're going to make comments, you make specific comments, and you address them with specific information. You just don't make allegations about things. And I found things in there that were really inappropriate, and embarrassed me as a county resident. And I think it would, I mean, I would just suggest and encourage you to have a resolution addressing the things that you're really concerned with, that you have factual information behind, and so that you're addressing specific questions. Maybe the whereas is, don't have to have all the details, but have a supporting document that justifies the whereas is, that can be then taken to whoever you're going to take this to. I would take it to All Aboard Florida first and say, how can we work together? Because there is an economic benefit to this area, and if you're going to endure increased costs from maintenance of these crossings, then you want to have an increased income strain, and, income, and that's going to, that's going to come from the improvements that a transit, in terms of local property values and commercial interests that a transit station would give you. Frankly, I would hop on the train and go to Miami. I would not drive my car to Miami. I wouldn't, same for Fort Lauderdale. Well, you can't say they're not going to stop here because of that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to say that...
Yeah, I have one protocol thing, so the public understands. If someone wants to give longer than a three-minute presentation, they should go to Tammy Vock first. I've let these two presentations go longer in fairness, because they represent the other side of the equation. But I would ask people in the future, if you're going to go longer than three minutes, please ask her in advance so that we know when you're on the agenda. That's all.
Well, I did ask, I mean, I did mention, I did contact her by email, and she said, well, you'll be... well, you'll be able to speak at the public comments.
No, I, thank you for your comments, sir. Appreciate it. And I think we appreciate your analytical view, and I'm not, I'm not being critical of you.
I've been on the other side, I understand.
I, I think it's useful to have a quid pro quo. So you've done that.
May I make one suggestion, then? That you have a clock that people talking here can see, because I have no idea when the three-minute mark passed.
Yes, sir. Normally, this is a little different kind of session than regular city council. And so therefore, I've, we run it a little bit differently, but I normally tell you, but I was, again, Casey had a fair amount of time, I was allowing you the same amount.
I appreciate that.
In fairness.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our job is to represent the public, both sides, and we can't represent them if we don't listen to them.
That's correct.
And I would voice my objection, no matter which side is speaking. This gentleman was, was giving facts, he wasn't repeating himself, and I, I would object to this interruption.
Thank you very much.
If I may, please, I understand what Mayor Winger is talking about with the time limit, but in fairness to everybody that has come, the rail commission meetings and our city council's been kind enough to afford us this. We pretty much let folk speak, and a lot of folk, I noticed, keep an eye on the folk out in the audience, and they know kind of when to start wrapping things up, especially if there's a lot of people that want to speak. I understand what the mayor's talking about, because we still have to, as both bodies, because this is the time that we can interreact, you know, towards the end here, we still have to have a discussion, and it's already 5:51. So anyone else coming forward, just if you can, we still have to talk to, so whoever else is next, come on up.
Let me see, a show of hands, who, how many more want to come forward? Because we have to consider whether we want to take a break. This council, it's now been two hours. Why don't we take a break until 10 minutes after the hour of six, please?